This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Public access.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, and welcome to our January 7th Board of Selectmen meeting. And Happy New Year, everyone, to you and your families. I'm joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Boehme. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to call this meeting to order and go to item number two. We'll stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, the approval of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting of December 3rd, 2020.
Before we do that, Michael, I just wanted to make a point. Usually, one of our standing items on the agenda is comments relative to the agenda, which is not on here. I know it hasn't been on in a while. But I just wanted to, again, remind you about my feelings about us doing something about allowing public comments. I mean, I know that, and the reason why I'm bringing it up under relative to the agenda is because our agendas always start with this box explaining, you know, due to the Governor Lamont's declarations, there's no in-person access. But there's nothing in any of his executive orders that prohibits public comment. And in fact, the Board of Ed is, the North Haven Board of Ed is successfully allowing, or I should say accommodating, live public comment by phone. And so I had brought this up a couple of months ago. And I just wanted to, again, state, I hope that soon we could make similar arrangements to allow for the public to comment on our minutes.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of this.
Okay, great.
And, you know, Val, maybe we could see if we can get that done as soon as the next meeting, okay?
That would be great. With that said, regarding the approval of the minutes, I do have one comment about the minutes. And it is on page two, the top, in that big paragraph at the top of page two. Second to the last, this is the portion of the minutes that talks about the PSAR presentation that Chief Janishevsky gave us so kindly, came to our meeting via Zoom last month and gave a detailed presentation. And then we were all afforded the opportunity to ask questions. There's this one sentence here that says, "The discussion continued at length with Ms. Boehme suggesting that the chief come back before the board in approximately nine months to give an update." I would like to add, because the chief said he would do that only if the first selectman had requested him to return. And so after he said that, I immediately turned to you. And you immediately agreed that that would be a good idea. And I just wanted to make a motion to amend the minutes to read that the first selectman agreed that the chief should come back in approximately nine months to give an update.
Well, Paul did say that, you know, provided the first selectman authorized it. He did say that, so.
And I looked at you, and you immediately agreed that it was a good idea, if my recollection is correct.
All right, so add that in there, okay?
Thank you.
I still reserve the right to see how it goes. But I did say that, so we'll put it in the minutes, okay?
Thank you.
So we'll make a motion to amend the minutes to include what Sally just mentioned. Bill, can I have that motion?
I'll make a motion to indicate that the, you know, to add the sentence that the first selectman agreed it was a good idea for the chief to come back in nine months.
Well, I may just say, the amendment should say that the chief stated that at the request of the first selectman, okay?
Correct.
And then.
And that you then thought that it was a good idea.
Exactly.
Which you did.
Yes.
I just wanted the full back and forth to be reflected.
That's what was said.
Yeah, okay. Well, with that amendment, I would second that amendment.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes with the stated amendment that we just all approved. I will motion for the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting of December 3rd, 2020.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Sally. All right, we're going to move to item number four. And I wanted to have you direct your attention to the TV sets. We have our town clerk, tax collector here, Stacy Yarborough, who traditionally works late every night. I wanted to give everyone tonight an update. And Ms. Boehme asked if I would do this. And of course, we were willing to do it. And it's an initiative that the entire Board of Selectmen agrees upon. And it's the Governor's Executive Order regarding a tax deferment program, similar to what we did, ladies and gentlemen, back in the July time period. So Stacy's here. She's socially distanced from us. Stacy, I think if you'd like, you can take the mask off because we're well more than six feet away. And I'd like, if you would, to talk about all your hard work on this and what we've done, you and I collaborated on this. Go right ahead.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate you giving me a few moments to speak before the selectmen's meeting. I thought it was very important that we should, if not already widely known, advise the town, the public, that there has been an extension with regard to the taxes that are normally due in January. The governor did amend and add to his executive, ongoing executive orders, in specific reference to Executive Order 9R. The governor has allowed an extension of an extra two months for the due date for taxes due on January 1st each year. Normally, they'd have to pay by February 1st. This year, with regard to the January 1st taxes, you will be taxed, taxes will be extended for the purpose of payment to April 1st. April 1st is the due date instead of February 1st, meaning you have until April 1st to pay without penalty. There are a few exceptions. The first exception relating to those who have mortgages, mortgage companies who pay their taxes, they do not qualify for that extension. And one other exception would be homes that are held as rental property. Landlords are required to file with the town for the extension. I've only had a few people reach out to me for that purpose. And I directed them to the governor's website, which holds all of the application materials necessary for those purposes. But for the vast majority of those who live in town, the executive order does apply to those payments of real estate taxes for the second half, personal property taxes for the second half, as well as motor vehicle supplemental bills, which come due in January. No other taxes will be extended, only those due in January 1st. Another caveat is that Town Hall has been closed to the public for quite some time. I believe right after the election, we closed. And we are open by appointment only. You may very well come into Town Hall to pay if you find that necessary. But you do need to call in advance, and you need to make an appointment. Otherwise, I've made it so that you are able to mail your payments to Town Hall directly. There is a lockbox that is in Hartford, and the envelope that's provided with your taxes, you can mail it there. And we receive that information electronically, or lastly, we have the online payment system, which has been very successful over the last few years. So you do have a lot of options. But if you would like to come to Town Hall, please do call in advance and make an appointment. We're open 8:30 to 4:30. That also applies to my town clerk's office. We are open. We're doing everything that we would normally do, except we have to do it by appointment. So once again, the executive order was issued on December 16th. And the only caveat with regard to that, it was kind of late coming. And so my first legal notices that were published in December did not mention the extension. But everywhere else and every other legal ad that you will see, we'll have the executive order mentioned, the new due date mentioned. And that's been published in multiple newspapers in town, the town's website. I've also published it on Patch and North Haven Television. So anywhere I could publish it, I have. And I hope to be able to communicate that to everyone because I'd hate for someone to believe that they don't have the extension.
Well, I'd like to personally thank you on behalf of this board, Stacy, for the preparation, the thoroughness, and the detail that you bring to this position. And we truly appreciate it. But I wanted to see if Sally and Bill have any questions on this. Again, thank you for your thoroughness.
Thank you for your compliment. I appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for coming in, Stacy. I do have a very important comment. You've said twice that the due date is April 1st. That's incorrect. The due date is still January 1st.
You're correct.
2021, just as your amended notice says. The grace period is extended to April 1st. And the reason why that is so important to understand is that there were some problems when we did this for the July payment. The payment was due July 1st, but there was a grace period extension up to and including October 1st. People thought October 1st was a new due date. And they're used to a 30-day extension from a due date. I got a call from a few people who said, hey, I went October 9th and paid my taxes. I thought I was paying them early because the due date was October 1st. And I got hit with interest going back to July. I'm sure that that happened, Stacy, that people did pay in October and had to pay interest. So I want to stress very carefully that the due date is still January 1st, and that taxes must be paid on or before April 1st. There is no other extension beyond that date. If you pay, and correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy, if you pay your taxes, your real estate taxes, for example, after April 1st, you will be hit with an 18% per year or 1.5% per month interest rate computed back to January 1st. Is that not correct?
That is correct. The date to pay, the due date, is January 1st.
Thank you.
But you have an extension, and that goes until April 1st instead of February 1st. To answer your question with regard to a lot of people having late fees and with regard to the October 1st due date, of course, we had a lot of people who paid late. But the vast, I would say, 95% of the town folks, I had no complaints, and everyone was very aware. And to be honest with you, the late payments were not excessive.
Right. Well, the late payments are controlled by statute, as you know, at the 18% per year. But yeah, I don't have the number. I did see the statistics in the Board of Finance materials that were provided at that time as far as the collection amount for October. So some people did pay interest. I just wanted to make it very clear that the due date hasn't changed, that the extension of the period of interest-free grace period has been extended, not the due date.
There's an extension. There's always a 30-day grace period.
Yes, of course, of course. It has been extended an additional two months.
Correct.
So, but the due date has not changed. So I think it's very important that the folks are aware of this. I hope that we could do a little better in publicizing this. When I had contacted the first selectman's executive assistant, Val Gutkin, on December 22nd, inquiring about our, you know, the response to Governor Lamont's December 16th Executive Order 9R. And I agree with you. I wish he had done it a little bit sooner so we have a little bit more time to give notice. I remember in July, for July, we knew about it in April. We knew a couple of months before, not a couple of weeks. So I commend him for allowing towns the option to extend the grace period this second time, if you will, because people are still struggling financially from the consequences of COVID. So I commend him for authorizing towns to extend this option. I just wish he had done it sooner. So I agree with you on that. But, you know, I was told by Ms. Gutkin that the revised legal notice was already on the website, which I have here. And, you know, we do have a new town website, which takes a little getting used to navigating through. And you had to first go to the town website. Then you had to click on government. Then you had to click on departments S through Z because that's where tax collector was. Then you had to click on tax collector. Then there was a line that said, amended legal notice taxes due. So fifth and finally, you had to click on that to finally come across the legal notice. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, under the old website system, when you first went on the first page, there was an area with like current special announcements.
And there is on the current, on the new website. And it was also posted on that, right in the middle. There's an announcement section. There's like four items that come up that are the most current.
Okay, the only one that I saw was the announcement about the new notification system. I saw that in a little box.
That's in the little box.
Right.
But on the homepage, when you scroll to the middle, there are four boxes that are, they're like newsworthy items. And it was posted there. That would have been like in the old version where we used to put announcements.
Yeah, yeah.
That's kind of the new version. So on there right now is, there's a, the legal notice about the taxes. There's sanitation advising people that there's no change in the trash.
Okay.
This for Martin Luther King. I just had something on there regarding some little mini-grant program, but that just came down. So it changes, but it was in the middle. And then we also put it in the department, which is where you navigate your way to.
That's what I did. When I, now, to be fair, I looked on the website, you know, back when, you and I, maybe a few days after you and I talked about this, we didn't, we emailed. So it's been a while, so maybe these things went on after that. But all I saw was the box for the special. Okay, maybe I was mesmerized by the large picture of Mr. Frieda.
It's a different feel. It is definitely a different feel.
I couldn't see anything else.
Yeah, it's a different feel from the old website.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I'm not, you know, saying I'm opposed to the change, you know. It's just, you have to get used to it.
You do.
But I didn't see it, so maybe it wasn't there back when I looked, or whatever. But I thought that.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe what we should do is, I'm not that important, so shrink my picture on the website.
And put the notices bigger.
I'd just like to add that the executive order did come out on December 16th, late at night.
Yeah.
And on the next day, we discussed it. And I had direct conversation with OPM with regard to the process of how we were going to proceed. And in speaking to Mr. Heff, he advised me that the paperwork would not be available till the following Monday. And so as soon as it became clear what was necessary, which actually ended up being nothing because what we had was an extension of the already authorized plan, which, as you may recall, was an option, three options. You could take a lower interest rate, an extension of time to pay, or both. And we, as a town, voted upon the extension of time. Currently, the reduction of interest rate wouldn't apply to the type of situation we have.
Right.
And so there was no need to put it out to a vote. And so therefore, I was able to publish right away. So that Monday went straight to the website. And it has been, everything goes to my main page. But if it's of very important need, I ask that it be placed right on the main page. And it has been there since day one that I was able to do so.
I did not see it. Okay. So, well, thank you. Right, yeah, the town didn't vote. The Board of Selectmen voted on that last April to go with just the extension. It wasn't a town meeting.
I didn't say town meeting.
And that actually was.
You said the town.
I think along the same lines. And so we do not need to vote again.
No.
Right.
Just on the order.
That's correct. They extended that. They allowed it.
It's really an extension of our existing vote.
Yes, sir.
We don't need to take them into account.
One final point on this, just why this came out late on or about the evening of December 16th. This was pretty controversial this time around because a lot of the cities and towns are really hurting financially. And the cash flow impact for many of these cities and towns is significant. And even us here in North Haven, you know, we've experienced, ladies and gentlemen, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars of one-time expenses that weren't budgeted. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment. But, so that was part of the reason. I actually had to, as CCM president, call all of the large city mayors to find out what their position on this was. And really, there was a mixed reaction all across the state. So in fairness to the state, that's why it came out late. And then with Val and Stacy reacting so quickly, we got it out as quickly as we could, so.
I also thought maybe it came out late because we did see, in November, we started to see an uptick in positivity rates. You reported the town being in a red zone. So I thought also it might have had something to do with the uptick in the positivity rates and the continued financial strain.
All that comes into.
Because things were getting a little better of August, September, you know. And then it peaked, it got worse. So maybe that was also a factor in the governor's timing of his decision. But that's interesting that it was a bit of a strain for some of our municipalities.
It is, yeah.
But I'm glad that we are able to offer this extension. I mean, obviously, people could still pay, you know, whenever they want. But to at least have that extra time, if it's needed, I think it's great that we are offering the extension.
All right, so we're good then?
Yeah. You know, and I think along the same lines, like we said last time when we had the, you know, an extension in terms of the grace period. You know, it's nice that you have that opportunity. But if you can pay in January, please do, you know. I mean, just like so many people paid in July. If you look back at the, you know, I think we all said that back the last time around. We actually had very, you know, I mean, obviously, a good percentage of the payments are due to mortgage escrows. But, you know, a large number of people in town, you know, myself included, no longer, because we're old, have paid off their mortgage. So, and a lot of people did pay, you know, and a lot of people did pay in July. So if you can pay in January, it definitely helps the cash flow for the town. And so many people did that already.
Well, to that point, Bill. Stacy, you know, I mentioned about her attention in detail. She was giving me daily updates in July in terms of where we were from a cash standpoint. And we're very grateful to the residents for paying like they did in July. We were able to get through July with two payrolls, a debt payment on the police department and middle school without having to take tax anticipation notes out. So we're very grateful for that. Thank you.
And the other thing that, you know, right, you know, makes sense paying is, I think, as we all know, if you look at interest rates on a savings account or a CD, they're next to zero. You don't get, or a money market fund, they're nothing. So you really don't get anything. If you have the money, you don't get anything unless you actually need it for holding on for another three months. So I think it helps the town out, and you're not really hurting yourself if you have the ability to pay, you know, during January instead of taking the extension.
Any closing comments, Stacy, or?
Just would like to express my thanks to the town folks because everyone has been very cooperative. I've had very few complaints. People understand the situation that we're all in. Ms. Boehme had noted that there were quite a few phone calls she received asking questions about the taxes. And I would just reiterate that we are here every day working in the offices. And if you have a question, the people of town, you know, call me. Ask questions. That's what we're here for. And we'll direct you in the right way to get your payment in. If in doubt, call us. There's no problem with that. We're here to help you.
The three people that called me, I answered their questions to the best of my ability, and I sent them your way.
Great, wonderful. Thank you.
All right, so if we can move on to the next subject.
Yes.
So I wanted to take everyone through. This past year was very difficult, 2020. So many challenges, ladies and gentlemen. And as we approach 2021, I wanted everyone to know that I have personally set for myself on behalf of the town of North Haven about 47 different initiatives that I'd like to get done between now and the first half of the year. Now, these are bold and audacious goals, but I still have a great deal of energy here. And I am relentless on trying to create positive outcomes. So here, if you look at the TV screen, I have, and I'd like to share at least 10 of these goals with you tonight. And the first goal is to balance this 2021 fiscal year budget. I referenced earlier, the town has been hit with so many one-time non-reimbursable expenses, between $500,000 and $600,000 on the tornado cleanup. I made a commitment to every resident that they're very difficult times this past year. That was something we wanted to do, but that was a non-budgeted expense. COVID-related expenses. Stacy referenced that she's here every day. We don't work out of our homes. Many cities and town halls do that. The employees are home. We're here every day, even though now we went back to an appointment schedule because now we're in the red zone on COVID again. So we're here, and the COVID-related expenses in terms of sanitizing buildings, partitions, masks, shields, was quite extensive. Unbeknownst to any of us, that we did not receive much reimbursement. Connecticut did not qualify for a disaster during a tornado. So none of us, or any of our municipalities who were hit by that tornado, are getting reimbursed for those expenses. We may be getting, we may have already gotten it, about $53,000 worth of reimbursable expenses on COVID versus about $275,000 worth of expenditures. So I'm on a mission now, watching these next six months, January through June, every day, micromanaging the finances of this government. That's what I do here, among other things. Secondly, and this happened even today because I hosted a CCM meeting as CCM president. My term has ended. So now I've turned the gavel over to another mayor. And today, we had the two state senate leaders on a statewide Zoom conference call. So I will be, along with other chief elected officials, monitoring our state funding for the year 2122. And that's the, this budget we're working on now. That starts in July. What that means is we cannot afford any reduction in state aid knowing that we're coming off of a year, or we will be, with all these non-reimbursable expenses. So I'll be paying a lot of attention to that, working very closely with a lot of people. And I'll share some of them shortly. And then managing, again, the overall finances of the government, which I spent a lot of time on here with Ed Swinkowski. Item number four, you've heard me say this past year that we lost about 37 economic development projects through COVID in terms of either losing these businesses that were going to come or everything on hold. So as Valerie knows, we were joking in the office the other day, Valerie, Tammy and I, that I came out of the starting blocks very quickly after the first of the year with a great deal of energy, getting things done, moving forward. And I'm trying to reassemble the broken parts of economic development that happened this past year. Yes, we have new businesses coming in and you'll, we've already reported those. For Hours Market, I mentioned, the Jersey Mikes, O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and a couple of other new businesses. But I'm not satisfied. Got to continue to jumpstart this grand list. So I've already got about seven projects assembled that I'm trying to bring forward here, but still not enough, and that's a focus of mine this year. I, even though I turned over the gavel today to the mayor of Hartford to become CCM president, I'm still on the executive committee, still running some committees. And then now I take over as chairman of the Regional Council of Governments, which is the South Central Region. As this happened, this will happen this month. So that means that from a regional standpoint, I'll be aggregating all of the power of the regional mayors to ensure that we're working collaboratively with the state. And you may not realize, but the governor and his staff have appointed me to one of the three vaccine committees. I'm going to have an update for you here shortly on the statewide vaccine, what's happening with that. Item number seven, we are currently, we'll have a board of selectmen meeting as the second step this coming week. And we're developing and spending a lot of time on this next fiscal year's budget, starting in July. Sally, myself, and Bill, we're meeting, I think it's next Monday, Val.
Yes.
With Ed. And we'll look at the preliminary draft of what the budget looks like. And that'll go through all the iterations, workshop sessions, Board of Finance, and ultimately to a referendum in May. Eight, number eight, I spend a lot of time working with all the department heads, including Stacy in the tax and town clerk department and Gary, our assessor. We will continue to do that. It's very important on the communication side. One of the major things for me is to ensure the town services are maintained and slightly enhanced at a time when cities are cutting. We had one of the mayors on a statewide conference call today stating that he's going to have to lay off 100 employees and reduce services and raise taxes. Now, think about that, ladies and gentlemen. Laying off 100 city employees, reducing services, and then still has to raise taxes. That is a real issue across the state of Connecticut right now. So that is a mission of mine to ensure that our services are maintained and slightly enhanced. Now, we will be working very closely like we always do. We have a new state senator, Paul Chicarella. Dave and I work very closely together, Dave Yaccarino. Marty Looney and I also work very closely together. I had him on the statewide call today. And I'll be working closely still with the governor's office. Governor Lamont, Jonathan Harris, Mary Glassman, and Paul Mounds in particular, to ensure that we understand what's happening at the state level and how it potentially could affect our municipalities, either positively or negatively. So those are 10 of the 47 different things I've set for myself to try to get things done and create positive outcomes this year. It's not going to be easy, but I'm putting the responsibility on me to get these things done, working with all of our town employees on the town side. Now, very important, I'd like to provide everyone a vaccine update because I see some communication issues out there with respect to what's happening and how the residents all over the state are interpreting what's being said. Here's a quick overview. As I mentioned, I sit on one of the vaccine committees. Connecticut's being allocated approximately 55,000 vaccines per week. There are approximately 3.75 million people in the state of Connecticut. So if you took those numbers, assuming the 55,000 vaccines per week remains constant, and I'm hoping it doesn't, I'm hoping Connecticut gets allocated more, that's about 62 weeks until people fully get vaccinated. Now, what we're finding is 70 to 75% of the people want to be vaccinated. And yet, there are still about 25% or so that don't want to get vaccinated for a variety of reasons. Even if we took that 3,750,000 and we multiplied it times 0.75, based on that allocation per week that Connecticut gets, that's their allocation that they have to distribute through all the delivery mechanisms and supply chain, that's still about a year before everybody can get vaccinated. Now, as of this afternoon, 99,929 first doses were administered so far in this process. And 1,805 were second doses that have already been administered. Now, what that means is if you combine the two, 101,734 total doses have been administered. It's anticipated that all of the nursing homes in the state will have completed administering all of their first doses by tomorrow. But when we look at the primary distribution network to deliver the vaccines, they are primarily pharmacies, CVS and Walgreens have been designated, hospitals, and outpatient clinics, and a couple of other clinics throughout the state. They are also on an allocation basis. Keep in mind, Connecticut only gets 55,000 a week at this point. We are still in Phase 1. And in Phase 1, Phase 1 includes all first responders, all hospital workers, all residents and staff within nursing homes, and all healthcare workers. When I said but earlier, even though the nursing homes are anticipated to be completed by tomorrow, we calculate that within Phase 1A, still with the 101,734 vaccines that have been administered, we're only between 40 and 45% of the groupings within Phase 1A. This is why, ladies and gentlemen, Phase 1B has not come out yet. Now, let's take a look at Phase 1B. 1B is the next phase, as I mentioned. It has not been finalized, but we're being told in our committee and today, all the mayors and first electmen across the state that it's estimated to begin Phase 1B during the February to May timeframe. We've been told that this phase would potentially include, potentially, we're hoping, residents aged 75 and over. We've been told also, those living in congregate settings. People with disabilities, potentially maybe in 1B. Uncompensated caregivers, high-risk individuals who are under 65 years of age. And possibly, we learned today, those with intellectual disabilities or those with disabilities. As of tonight, as we sit here, or as of 6:30 this evening, Phase 1B has not been finalized on a state level. Now, I'd like to give our fire chief a lot of credit, Paul Januszewski, because he's done a great job in helping move along the first phases of 1A, working very closely with our health department. Paul and I work very closely together. We have a really good relationship with our health district here. But this is a personal opinion that I wanted to share with everybody tonight. The dilemma that I see, it's a supply and demand issue, ladies and gentlemen. The dilemma is that the supply of vaccinations, being on an allocation, are not enough to meet the demand. So please don't get frustrated. I think what might have been happening all over the state, the announcements may have created a higher level of expectation than the allocation process has been able to deliver. So we're hoping that sometime in the next week or two weeks, there'll be a clear distinction and definition on Phase 1B. And then, at that point, we all have to hope that the third pharmaceutical company, perhaps a fourth, can get more vaccines in distribution. Connecticut's allocation gets higher. And then the network, the supply chain, in business, we used to call this a supply chain. The CVSs of the world, the Walgreens of Connecticut, the hospital network in Connecticut, the healthcare clinics, they can get more vaccines that they can help start incrementally delivering more vaccines to those residents in need and who want those vaccines. That is an overview. And one final point unrelated to the vaccines, but related to COVID, ladies and gentlemen. I see a serious problem emerging in town, and I'd like to share it with everybody. It has really come into crystal clear focus with me that our residents and residents all over the country and all over the world have been battered by this pandemic. The uncertainty, the anxiety, the hopelessness. And we see it every day. Valerie, Tammy and I, we get 100 phone calls a day. And many times, it's people who really need some hope, some direction, and some help. But what we've seen also, and I think it's related to this pent-up frustration and anxiety, is a very high level of speeding cars in town. It's almost like when people get out in the road, you know, they feel free for a moment, they're by themselves. And our police department is having a tough time keeping up with the speeding. We have a lot of calls on speeding. Unfortunately, we kicked off this new year with two tragedies, two fatal accidents on day one, January 1st. One of the families I know very well, it's a very sad thing. The other individual was a fine individual who perished on Clintonville Road. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm asking you tonight to please, and I'll share with you what I do when I'm in a car. I look at the speedometer regularly as I'm driving. And sometimes it's tempting to go a little faster. But we must control the driving and the way we drive and the speeding in town. Because consider this, as all that now is happening in town, there are those people who I mentioned who are pent up, that they may have small children, they have families. And one of the things they're doing to recreating is walking and perhaps riding bicycles on roads. Walking is more prevalent this time of year. If there's a nice day and the roads are clear, people get out and walk. I've seen people with strollers with young children. And the combination of that and excessive speeding in town is a very dangerous thing, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm asking you to please, please be aware of when you're in a car, what your car rate of speed is. And thank you for allowing me to talk about that public service announcement.
And that's not unique to North Haven because I think there, you've seen a lot of other fatalities and other, Jeremy walking his dog.
Yep.
I've never been part of the state who got hit just walking his dog. Mike, on the Phase 1B, which, you know, seems, you know, I was just looking at what you put up there. The, you know, I think you're talking about people over 75. And then separately, you, I think seems to be maybe because we changed the criteria from 65 to 75. And then you talk about people with existing, pre-existing conditions under 65. That really should be people with pre-existing conditions under 75. Because you've really excluded, you know, they're not in the 75, 65 to 74 age group is not in the 75 age group. And the 65 and under, they're not in that group either if they have pre-conditioning, pre-existing condition. So I've seen that, like, publicized a few times. It seems like it's actually incorrect that it shouldn't be anybody with pre-existing conditions, you know, 74 and under.
Well, we make a note of that, Val. That's something I'll bring back to the state on that as a recommendation.
As I said, they moved from 65 to 75, and it's almost like you've forgotten that age group.
Right.
65 to 74, 66 to 74.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions about your overview. The first one is back to your initiatives. The second one you talked about was monitoring state funding for especially its impact on the 2122 budget. I noticed there was quite a long article in The Courier today where you were talking about a lot of these issues. And you had said in there that you expected the state funding for our 2122 budget to be flat-funded. Now, I know that articles in our weeklies are sometimes done a week or maybe 10 days earlier. So I was wondering, do you still feel what you said in the article, that the state funding will be flat-funded despite the state's financial problems?
So as of today, I still do. But you see, everything happens in real time. I've already mentioned this before, ladies and gentlemen, things change. And not only here, but also at the state level. So now, what we're seeing at the state level is a projected deficit that was not as much as they originally had projected. So if that number remains where it is, and there's no unforeseen circumstances that drive that up, even today's meeting at CCM with the two leaders of the senate, they understand that right now, that's their goal to have us flat-funded. But then, and this is what we don't know, there are those municipalities that are asking for more money because they're distressed municipalities. They are projecting deficits. They're not making their pension obligations. And they're asking for more money. And what I don't know, and what we don't know, is there's only so much money to go around. So many times, what we've seen, what I've seen in this career, and never saw in my other career as CEO of my companies, but sometimes we get penalized for running a good government when it comes to state funding in terms of the financial aspect of running the government. To answer your question, Sally, as we sit here almost 10 of 8 tonight, I would say, yes, I anticipate flat funding, but I want to qualify that by saying it could change.
Right. Well, I'm hopeful, you know, flat funding might sound bad to some folks, meaning, oh, we're not getting any more funding. We're flat funding, meaning we're going to get about the same that we're getting for the current fiscal year. But, you know, our state funding has been fairly constant over the past five or six fiscal years anyway. Yeah, it may go up a little bit, you know, the, you know, the two main chunks are the, on education, the education cost sharing is usually in the 3.6 million, give or take a little. And the MRSA money's been floating in the 1.4, the 1.8 area. So those have been pretty steady. And those are the single, the two single largest components of the total, you know. So I would be thrilled with flat-funded.
I would be happy with it also.
Yeah. Because, you know, I was worried that it might be, you know, a 30% reduction when I first heard some of these state deficit figures coming up. But as you say, that picture is getting a little better. But, you know, our crystal balls are in the shop. We don't know, right? But I would be thrilled, and I'm sure our friends on the Board of Finance would be thrilled with a flat-funded portion of our revenue from the state. So that was my one question. I just wasn't sure because of how old the article might have been, you know. And the second thing, you had mentioned when talking about the vaccine, that the chief is working with our health department. I assume you mean the Quinnipiac Valley Health District. What exactly is their role in all of this? Can you describe that a bit? I mean, are they coordinating for the towns within their district?
So, so I guess the best way to answer it would be this, okay? They're a great coordinator and an asset to the chief and us. Because our first responders, fire department as an example, are part of the 1A phase in, Paul works collaboratively with the health department to ensure that our firefighters, in this example, were getting the vaccine as part of that Phase 1A.
As well they should, yes.
So, and that's kind of.
Okay. I just wondered if there were any special responsibilities that Quinnipiac Valley had under this, that you said there's three different vaccine committees. But they're just coordinating, okay.
And I think that when the allocation increases, their coordination level will increase also.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so now, I want to get to correspondence. And then we have Jeff in our PR, Town Attorney. Valerie has to get up and do a conversion.
Well, I'm not going to be able to do that, it turns out, because the slides are on your computer. So they will be on voice only, but they can still comment. We will hear them.
Okay. They won't be able to see it, though, right?
They will see it.
Okay.
But.
All right, very good. All right, so let's get to item number five. We did have some correspondence, a dear packet from Mr. Gary George, who came up with what we thought was a very good idea on a poet laureate. Some municipalities do this, and it comes at a time when there is a lot of tension out there. And what Valerie and I thought immediately was that it could be a library function. And Val, I'm going to turn it over to you to explain what we did.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. Yes, we did receive, the board received some correspondence from Mr. Gary George requesting that the town establish a poet laureate program as well as with a youth component to that. He would like to see a town poet laureate as well as a youth laureate that would be mentored by the town laureate. He thinks that the positions could serve to inspire town residents to value and appreciate the language arts. So we took George's suggestion and we passed it on to our Director of Library Services, Sue Griffiths, who thought that it was intriguing. Sue Griffiths, who thought that it was intriguing, and she did some research with the state, and she determined that there are other towns that do have these programs, and that it is a function of the library board in some of these towns. So she agreed to put it on the library board agenda, and she reached out to Mr. George to advise him that that would be her intention, and he was very pleased and happy for that. And it looks as though it is now going to be handled through the library board, and they will determine how to configure it and how to appoint...
And Susan's on board. I see no reason why the library board wouldn't be on board also. So it's our recommendation, so we'll see what happens.
I think some members in particular on the library board will be very enthusiastic about this. I wanted to thank Gary George for sending this to us as well. He did include a link that listed the 32 municipalities, you know, it's not just a few. There's 32 towns that have poet laureates, including our friends to the north, Wallingford, Guilford, Hamden, West Haven. So I think it's a great idea, because lots of folks are turning to the arts to deal with, well, they can't go anywhere, but also to deal with the stresses and, like you mentioned, anxieties of the day, of the days that we are struggling with, with this COVID. People are going to music concerts, virtual art museums, tours, and so I think it's very timely, and I just wanted to thank him. I think it's a great idea. I hope that it will be successful. I'm a bit of a little amateur poet myself, so I think it's a great idea, and I thank Mr. George for suggesting this. I knew we had a state poet laureate, but I never knew municipalities did this. And I think most importantly, the youth component to it is another great idea, because that will, you know, get some young people involved in language arts. And so, again, thank Mr. George for enlightening us.
Thank you, Mr. George. Any comments, or?
And I just wanted to tell Sally I also like poetry.
Okay.
I think I may be applying for...
Oh, yeah.
No, we don't. But I think Sally made up a very good point, too, you know. I think the other thing that Gary did, not only did we have a poet laureate maybe for the town, but there's also a youth, I think Sally mentioned that, so it's actually maybe, it would extend the appreciation of the arts and poetry into the, you know, to somebody younger, or maybe you could even have multiple youth, you know, poet laureates at different schools, even if it became fully developed. I thought that was even a better idea, that, you know, it would trickle down and encourage younger people to do things that are artistic in terms of poetry or maybe other things. So I thought it was a great email.
Our superintendent's on board also, and I think he conveyed that to Mr. George and us, so. All right, now, we've got, thank you again, Mr. George. Now, we've got a very important initiative here coming up, okay? And I'd like to tee it up. We have Jeff and Chief Paul Januszewski on the phone, Jeff, our town attorney. I'd like to tee it up by giving our audience some perspective. Over two years ago, our fire chief, Paul Januszewski and I, we were very concerned about the erosion and our inability to attract volunteers in the volunteer fire departments. So we decided to meet with the captains of all the houses, and we asked them, what commitment do you need from us to at least be able to retain the volunteers we have and perhaps even add more volunteers? And without hesitation, after some discussion, there were three things that came up, one of which was ensuring that the volunteer firehouses had food and water stocked, or allowing the captains to be able to purchase product so that the volunteers who would mobilize at those stations would have product there. And we took care of that with the captains, and that we did. The second issue was, they really wanted us to focus in on building a fire training facility. They thought that the training aspect of firefighters, volunteers, and paid were very important. We had been going down to different cities and towns to do this. So as you've heard before, I was able to have Quinnipiac University to agree to underwrite a very large portion of that training facility, and that's moving forward. But the last piece was an equally important piece. We had a lot of feedback from some of our longstanding volunteers. I'd like to personally thank Lieutenant Kurt Andrews, who was very instrumental in helping shape this for us, working with us, the chief, the attorney. Mark Petron, another individual who offered some great insight, and many of the volunteers. And this was a collaborative effort with the fire chief and I. We totally support the volunteers, and we supported these three initiatives that they asked us about. We brought in our town attorney, Jeff Danarfio, and we've come up with an amended volunteer firefighter pension plan. Now, I know, all of you know, that the volunteer firefighters do not get paid. So all they have, a longstanding pension plan that offered X amount of dollars a month after they retire. I've provided Bill and Sally, through Valerie, an amended document that was worked on by our fire chief, our town attorney, and Kurt Andrews, one of our longstanding volunteers, with input from Mark Petron and others. I have reviewed it, I support it. Now, tonight, our goal as a board of selectmen is to review it. Of course, we'll answer any questions. Jeff and Paul are on the line. And then we take it to a town meeting. The town meeting's a legislative body, and the town meeting would have to vote on it. So what I've done for our audience, and for Sally and Bill who've read the document already, I'm going to take you through the nine changes, the substantial changes in this. I'll read it, and then we'll open it up for questions, and then Jeff and Paul will be on the line. In Section 1.18, the word points was eliminated, and what was inserted, and inserted earns credible service. Section 2.2, the old pension document required 20 years of credible service. So a firefighter who began volunteering after his or her 45th birthday would be ineligible for a pension. In Section 7, a four-tiered vesting schedule was created so that someone who has five years of service would be eligible for 25% of the monthly pension once they retire. 10 years of service, they'd be eligible for 50%, and 15 years of service, 75. We felt that this tiered level of service may induce and may incent people to stay, knowing that after five years, as an example, there is something more for them if they choose to stay. So this is part of the retention and potentially recruiting. Section 4.1, we changed the minimum retirement age from 65 to 60, but still with a minimum of 20 years of service. Section 5.1, the minimum retirement amount changed from $200 to $350 plus $4 per month in excess of 25 years of service, with a combined monthly maximum of $400 per month. We felt by doing this, this was another incentive to retain the volunteers we've had, because that number's been drastically reduced down through the years. And hopefully, this is an incentive to get new recruits. Section 5.2, for simplicity, the old officer differential is consolidated to one officer level. There was a differential between the degrees of officer and their ranks. The number of years as an officer is reduced from 10 years to five, at $3 per month per year as an officer, also subject to a maximum of $400 per month in retirement. So in other words, ladies and gentlemen, if I stay on this just for a second, consider a volunteer who faithfully served this town for all those years, the most that that volunteer will get now is $400 per month. I think that's a number that's well worth that volunteer's service down through the Section 6.3, in 2019, we adopted an amendment to pay a surviving spouse 50% of the normal volunteer pension if that firefighter passes away before retiring. That's in Section 6.3. Section 7.1, in 2019, we adopted a four-tiered vesting to allow a firefighter to collect a partial benefit for five, 10, or 15 years of service. This is to incent firefighters to stay longer and provide a benefit for those that may join later in life. Section 8.4, the disability payment has been updated to be concurrent with the new monthly pension amounts. Section 13.1, reduction of the number of pension committee members to be comprised of three volunteer firefighters chosen by the volunteers in town, the first selectman, the finance director, and the fire chief. And these pension committee members would be there monitoring the pension and helping administer some of the details. So that was a recommendation, again, the three are chosen by, the three volunteers are chosen by the volunteers themselves. So that is a summary of the changes. The document's here. I'll turn it over to Bill and Sally for questions. Jeff and Paul are on the line. Sally, would you like to start?
Well, I agree that this is an effective way to not only attract, but to retain volunteers. We've heard from the fire chief in recent years that a reduction in our volunteer ranks has been a problem. So I am in favor of this. And my only question is about the proposed change in the number on the pension committee being six. I know it was eight, because there were two that were appointed at the pleasure of the first selectman, I believe was the old rule. I always thought that a committee was best served with an odd number, and so I would have liked to have seen it seven, with the seventh person being a member of the public appointed by the board of selectmen. That's my only thought on the document, but I fully support the initiative to attract more folks, and I think that the rates are reasonable, the tiers are reasonable. And that was my, going through it, that's the only thing that jumped out at me, was there was no public, member of the public representative. Obviously, the three elected folks, the, well, actually, just you and the chief are the only two elected folks. The others, the director of finance, are representatives of the people. But I just thought it should, could be seven with someone from the public, that's all.
All right, so we'll hold that question, we'll direct that, and we'll see what Paul and Jeff have to say. Bill, do you have any questions?
No, I think to go along the same lines, I think it's a good idea, you know, just as, I think this is a great way to continue to, you know, to find other ways to help, you know, provide fire services for the town. These people are, you know, I mean, volunteer firemen have been an important element of our fire protection for so long, and I think to do more to try to help them at some point for all their years of service is a great thing.
You know...
Yeah, my questions are not so much maybe regarding the document, but like just in terms of, you know, how they'll actually track the participation, and do they have a method to do that, or to make sure that that is properly recorded and everything, so that people get good credit? So that's towards the document, it's...
It's the tracking, yeah. Yeah, so we'll get Jeff's insight and Paul on that. And I want to say, just to tie in what Bill said and Sally said, that, you know, Paul Januszewski, our fire chief and I, we often talk about, we made three commitments at that meeting to those captains, and we took the captain's insight, and we want to get this done as the third final commitment that we committed to. We've said many times, Paul and I, we made these commitments, they were gracious enough to give us their input. Kurt Andrews, again, was tremendously instrumental in this, and I thank him for that. We want to honor these commitments, and this is the final commitment. So let's turn it over to Jeff and Paul about Sally's question and Bill's observation.
They can actually see you through here.
Is Jeff able to hear us?
I'm here.
Okay. So Sally had a question, Jeff, regarding the number of six, and came up with a question or a suggestion of, what about adding a seventh as a member of the public on the committee?
Well, the number of members wasn't something that I invented, it was given to me by Kurt Andrews, and it was, you know, blessed by everybody that reviewed it. So I certainly don't have any, there's no legal issue with having seven and having a member of the public. That's not a problem from a legal perspective, it's just a question of what the consensus is in terms of the number and composition of the committee.
All right. Paul, are you there?
Yes, sir.
And if you could weigh in on that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a fair suggestion, and it's something that we'd love to incorporate, and I don't think that there would be any objection to it at all.
It actually, the suggestion actually mirrors what we do with the paid firemen and that pension. We have a member of the public who is well-respected here in town, happens to be a firefighter for the city of Bridgeport. So I think it's something we could do. We'll run it by Kurt, see what he thinks, out of courtesy to him, but I think it's a valid, it's a valid suggestion. I do.
Okay.
So we'll run it by Kurt tomorrow, okay? Paul?
Yes, sir, thanks.
All right.
Having a member of the public seems to be a little bit more in the spirit of our charter, and having seven in case any votes are taken. You know, with six, you have a tie, you know, what do you flip a coin? You know, seven seems to be a workable number. I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
And Bill, and Paul and Jeff, Bill had an observation about the administering of the credits in the years, who would monitor that. Now, you know, we certainly, this is my answer to it, Bill. Ed and I, and particularly Ed, would monitor the years of service in conjunction with our HR, and the committee could get regular updates in terms of the monitoring to ensure the credits are valid. Is that kind of what you were saying?
The effective date of the change to the 25%, 25% of responding to the calls and 50% of the drills is, what's the actual effect, will be the effective date for that?
Well, I think, yeah. Paul?
Yeah, it's something that we've already implemented and will continue to have in place. To be quite honest with you, the previous document referenced points, and the way that points were obtained was really hard to keep track of, and it was left, in large part the responsibility of each individual volunteer station to track those. It's something that just became very hard to manage, and it's, we're able to, from the fire department standpoint, administratively, monitor years of service in connection with activity in terms of drills and calls, to ensure that it's considered a credible year of service. And that's something that's updated biannually through the finance department and we work with our actuary.
So, Paul, we do have good records for, you know, especially since you put vesting in now, too, in terms of actual years of service and everything. So you do have, you do have good records where the volunteers who are active will get, will get proper credit for the, under the terms of the amended plan.
Yeah, that's correct, sir. We have a software program that monitors all of our reporting software, as well as who responded to calls, who participates with drills, and so forth. So we've got the manner in which we can track that without a problem. We've already been doing so now for quite some time. This is nothing new for us to implement.
That's good, because I think you want to make sure that, you know, the volunteers you have now get fairly treated for their past service based on the amended document.
Of course.
So if there are no other observations and questions, both of which were very good, by the way, I'm going to turn the rest of this over to Sally and Bill to read the resolutions, okay? If you would do so for me, I'd appreciate it.
Bill, why don't you take seven, I'll do eight.
Thank you, Sally. Resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends the approval by the town meeting of the amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan, established on July 1st, 1991, and amended on June 27th, 2019, for the exclusive benefit of the Town of North Haven's volunteer firefighters, in accordance with the provision of Section 7-148(c)(5a) of the General Statute... 7-148(c)(5a) of the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut.
I'll second the motion as, uh, the resolution as read.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sally?
Yes, number eight is to consider and vote upon a call for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, January 25th, 2021, at 6:30 PM remotely via Zoom to consider and act upon the following. A, um, I make a motion that resolved that in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section 7, 148(c)(5a), the amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan established on July 1st, 1991, and amended on June 27th, 2019, is approved, and the first selectman is authorized to execute said amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan in the form presented to the town meeting due to Governor Ned Lamont's March 10th, 2020 Declaration of a Public Health Emergency and Civil Preparedness Emergency, and has subsequently issued executive orders, and due to the spread of COVID-19 in the state of Connecticut, including New Haven County, in-person public access to this meeting will not be permitted. This will be an electronic meeting and a video conference link, and a conference call dial-in will be provided for those individuals who would like to listen and participate, if electors, in the town meeting. So, I will make the motion, a motion to approve that resolution as read.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, um, you know, Sally's, uh, Sally's, um, um, motion.
All right, we have motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next.
Also, a motion, uh, resolved, this special town meeting will consider and act upon a resolution in accordance with the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen to approve the amended Town of North Haven Volunteer Firefighters Pension Plan and authorize the first selectman to execute same. I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and we move to the final step, which I'm very grateful for. So, thank you, Sally, thank you, Bill, thank you, Kurt Andrews and Mark, and all the volunteers, and Paul and Jeff, appreciate your efforts. Thank you very, very much, gentlemen.
Thank you both, be well.
Just maybe one other comment before, which I, uh, before Jeff goes and Paul goes. Um, you kind of answered my own question, it's in the resolution, but I don't see the if, we have a, an older effective date, um, and there's no amended date in the amended pension plan that I saw anyhow. So, I think, you know, when you actually do execute the new document, I think you should have the, um, the amended date, if it is gonna be Jan, June 27th, 2019, it should be incorporated into the document. And then I think on page, um, under definitions, you have an effective date in there, means July 1st, 2017, which must relate to a previous effective date.
Okay, so do we have, do we have your authorization, uh, to correct that, to reflect the date of the, uh, town meeting, assuming that the town meeting approves it?
Oh, yeah, I think the resolution is correct, I think it's just a, um, an administrative thing in terms of maybe ref, I just don't see, I just didn't find the effective date in the agreement, in the amended.
Yeah, well, well, that's what I'm saying, can we change 1.6 as the board, okay, with us changing 1.6 to reflect the date of the town meeting, assuming that the town meeting approves it?
I'm fine with that, Sally.
Sure.
Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I think that's just more administrative than it is anything that, that's...
Yeah, I mean, the intention was for you to have the redline version, but I'll provide a redline version and a clean version for the town meeting, because sometimes if you're not used to the redline documents, it can be a little bit difficult to track it. So, we can provide both the redline version so they can see the edits, as well as a clean version for ease of reading.
Okay.
It was helpful what you gave us already, so I think, you know, in terms of seeing the changes.
Yes.
And as far as the potential change to the number of the committee, can that be accommodated by the legislators at the town meeting, or does our call have to ref...
My, that's a good question. My interpretation was that the motion was based on the premise that we would make that change.
Okay.
All right, okay.
I, I thought that we had agreed to talk to...
We did. Um, I'll talk to Kurt, I, I don't think Kurt would have any problem with that, okay? We're moving this thing forward.
Yeah, I can see that, so I've already spoken with Kurt during this meeting, and Kurt's fine with it, and he represents the majority of the volunteers.
All right, so we're good, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Paul, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jeffrey and Paul, thanks again. Okay.
Thank you, thank you all.
Did we vote on everything? I forgot.
I think you did, yeah, you voted to, to send to the meeting and...
Because there was a lot of reading afterward, I just wanna remind people again who might be interested, that meeting is January 25th.
Excellent, right.
Okay, at 6:30.
6:30. So, I'm gonna turn this back again over to you, Sally and Bill, for the balance of these resignation appointments and refunds.
Moving along, okay. Bill, why don't you go first?
Thank you, Sally. Um, first on our list of resignation, resignations and appointments is the resi, I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Wesley O'Brien, 337 Kings Highway, from the Board of Education, term to expire November 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second it, but I would like to say, uh, that I was very sad to see this. I think Mr. O'Brien has been a tremendous asset on the Board of Education. He is, um, certainly an entertaining, um, a member and has great ideas, and I've always respected his, his opinion, so, um, with sadness, I will second the approval of this resignation.
It is sad. Wes is one of the finest gentlemen you ever would like to meet, ladies and gentlemen, and he served faithfully here. We go back a long way, even with his late, late wife, Deborah O'Brien, whom we still have very fond memories of, so I concur, Sally.
Okay.
Second. Okay, so, all those in favor?
I agree with that as well.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Paul Chicarella Jr., 104 Kings Highway, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire November 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Paul has taken the role of our new state senator in the 34th district, so he has resigned from this board. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
I'll make a motion, uh, for the appointment of Andrew Gorey, 108 Standish Avenue, from an alternate to a full seat on the zoning board of appeals, to fill the unexpired term of Paul Chicarella Jr., term to expire November 30th, 2021.
Second.
All right, Andy Bean, the alternate, can step right up, he's agreed to it, so thank you, Andy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion for the appointment of Teresa Ranciatavili, 100 Basset Road, to the Regional Planning Agency of South Central Connecticut, for a two-year term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, thank you, Teresa, I'd like to also thank Jim Giuletti, who served very faithfully on this, on this RPA for many, many years. Uh, Jim has decided to come off, uh, Teresa and I have spoken, Vern Carlson and I support it, and, uh, thank you very much for stepping up, Teresa. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'll motion, um, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Luigi Lou Coppola Sr., 27 Maple Avenue, to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate to fill, uh, the unexpired term of Carolyn, of Carolyn Yakarino terminating on November 30th, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lou. The Lou actually was a North Haven resident for many years, moved to Wallingford, missed North Haven so much that he and his wife Angela decided to move back and asked if we can consider this, and we have considered it, we agree with it, all those in favor? Aye. Next.
I will make a motion for the reappointment of Richard Monaco, 23 Sachem Drive, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Board of Finance for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
I'll second his reappointment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Richard, thank you for stepping up, I hope you're feeling better, my friend. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is the, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Hugh Davis, 1261 Ridge Road, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation, the Conservation Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, I'd like to thank Hugh also, this fine man, a wonderful man, served the town so faithfully in so many different boards and commissions, we appreciate him very much. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Mary Lou Stamp, 134 Middletown Avenue, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much, Mary Lou, for agreeing to do this, we appreciate it very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'll motion, um, the reappointment of Teresa Vili, 100 Basset Road, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Thank you, Teresa, for stepping up and agreeing to do this. All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Mark Cofrancesco, 6 Frost Drive, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the Land Trust for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much, Mark, you've been on this for quite some time, and we certainly appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll motion to reappoint, the reappointment of Stephen J. Fitzgerald, 34 River Road, to the Open Space Advisory Committee with the recommendation of the first selectman for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Second.
Thank you, Stephen. Stephen actually is the chair of the Open Space Committee, does a marvelous job, we appreciate it very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 10, I will move all property tax refunds, um, reflected in our agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Sally and Bill, for handling that last part of this meeting. And ladies and gentlemen, the next item of our Board of Selectmen, or for our Board of Selectmen, is Thursday, February 4th, 2021, right here at North Haven's Town Hall. So, with that being said, once again, on behalf of Sally and Bill, happy new year to everyone and your families, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.